6:00 PM. I have to call the meeting to order. Go ahead and call a roll. Thank you.
Trustee Abbott?
Here.
Trustee Frost?
President.
Trustee Garcia?
Here.
Trustee Gupta?
Yeah.
Trustee Malone?
Here.
Trustee Menaskalko?
Here.
President Skilman?
Here, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to put in the agenda here. Call the public hearing to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Abbott?
Here.
Trustee Frost?
President.
Trustee Garcia?
Here.
Trustee Gupta?
Yep.
Trustee Malone?
Here.
Trustee Menaskalko?
Here.
President Skilman?
Yes, here. Thank you. Our first item is Item C, a discussion on annexation agreement, LNH Farm LTD partnership in the village of Carpentersville.
President Skilman, on this item, based on the fact that LNH Farm Limited Partnership has still come back and is trying to discuss final terms of an annexation agreement, we're actually suggesting that, or recommending that, the board at this time just do a motion to continue the hearing on this item until the August 19th Village Board Meeting.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking for a motion to continue.
A motion to continue, Item C, until August 19. August 19.
I'll second.
Motion by Trustee Garcia, trust, uh, second by Trustee Abbott. Roll call, please.
Trustee Abbott?
Yes.
Trustee Frost?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Gupta?
Yes.
Trustee Malone?
Yes.
Trustee Menaskalko?
Yes.
President Skilman?
Yes, thank you. Motion carries. Our next discussion will be on annexation agreement with RTW Properties LLC in the village of Carpentersville. Matt, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and the board. Tonight, we're going to be talking about the annexation agreement for the RTW property. You could see up on the display here, the subject site is located on the east side of Randall Road. It's approximately 960 feet south of the Grand View Drive-Randall Road intersection, almost centrally located mid-block between that intersection and Randall and Huntley Road. The property is about 10 acres in size. As you can see in the lower left-hand corner, that's kind of a blow-up of the, uh, the property in aerial form. About half of the property is encumbered with a, uh, wetland. Whereas the front half, or the, uh, west half, uh, is free and clear of any wetlands, uh, and is available for development. That's really truly where the, uh, the buildable area is. With respect to zoning and comprehensive plan, uh, with the property annexed, uh, it assumes the, uh, default zoning of R1, uh, which is a residential classification, and the current, uh, comprehensive plan designation is multifamily in the back and commercial in the front. The project importance, uh, the, uh, main purpose for the annexation of this, uh, particular piece is to promote economic development along one of our key corridors. As all of you know, Randall Road is a heavily, uh, commercialized corridor. Uh, we share that corridor with, uh, other communities such as Elgonquin, uh, and, uh, Lake In the Hills. Uh, this will give us an opportunity to be, uh, competitive with them, uh, to bring in new growth, uh, new commercial, uh, as well as other, uh, types of land use. Uh, the site does have challenges, though. Um, there's, uh, as I had mentioned, there's, uh, an aided or a advanced identified wetland that encompasses, encumbers the, uh, the, uh, east half. Uh, the area has been identified as being prone to chronic flooding. Uh, we did a, uh, an analysis through HR Green, and they conducted that and determined as such. Uh, the property has limited access. Uh, it has a very narrow frontage, uh, but it does have access to a frontage road immediately to the south. Uh, and there are limited utilities, so anything that happens there, uh, utilities such as water and sanitary would ultimately have to be extended to, uh, the property and, or possibly upgraded. Uh, in order to, uh, promote success, um, we are looking at a TIF district, as many of you, uh, know. This particular piece, uh, is very important for that TIF. Uh, as you can see, it's almost centrally located. Uh, it's, uh, establishing contiguity with, uh, two of the parcels immediately to the north. Uh, so effectively everything in between Randall Road and Grand View. Um, that property has a lot of challenges, very similar to what the subject site has in terms of depressional storage and and prone to, uh, chronic flooding, and it's a bridge to, uh, the larger, uh, part of the TIF district, which again is identified in green up there. So, uh, without the, this particular piece, the size of the TIF, uh, would have likely been, uh, much smaller. It's also important to note that having this size TIF here is going to, uh, enhance our equalized assessed valuation. Uh, currently, the, uh, EAV, uh, is about $750,000, uh, based on our TIF consultant's analysis. Uh, and at full buildout, we could see this whole area increased up to about $206 million. Um, in addition, uh, the TIF, uh, would help support and finance, uh, utility upgrades. It would help to, uh, improve roadways, uh, both in terms of possible widening and/or signalization, uh, and it would help with the, uh, the issue of, uh, chronic flooding. The annexation agreement, um, as with any annexation agreement that, uh, you may be, uh, used to, uh, we normally, uh, provide zoning assurances and economic incentives. Uh, this is a list of some of the, uh, incentives that have been outlined within the, uh, the agreement. Looking to, uh, have the property re-sell to C2 or C2A. There's really not much, uh, in terms of difference between, uh, the two zoning classifications. Uh, in fact, we are contemplating maybe combining, uh, the two zoning districts under a separate, uh, text amendment that, at a later date. Uh, they are seeking a, uh, a waiver up to 50% of the, uh, the building permit fees up to $100,000, but not including third-party, uh, review fees. Uh, they are asking for a rebate on sales tax, uh, of 50% up to 30 months. This any development, uh, that does go there on that property and opportunity to kind of get the, uh, economic engine revved up so that it can, uh, be more sustainable. Uh, we've also included provision that we would include, uh, this parcel within the TIF, again, just to, uh, give them the assurances that, uh, we're not going to exclude them out of our, uh, ultimate vision for this area. Uh, and as part of that, we would set aside up to 25% of the parcel's tax, uh, uh, increment. Um, we did some projections on here, uh, this particular property, uh, if it went a certain way, could generate up to 1.2 to 1.4 million uh, in new, uh, property tax, and if, uh, we agree to this, the 25% would roughly be about $300,000. The balance then would go to, uh, the village. That would then go into the TIF escrow, uh, which could then be used to, uh, support other projects within the TIF area. So our recommendation, given, uh, the zoning assurances, uh, and economic incentives that are normally accustomed with annexations, and given that this parcel is vital to the establishment of, uh, creating contiguity within the TIF, uh, staff would recommend, uh, approval of the, uh, annexation agreement.
Thank you. Anybody?
I do have a question. You said it's roughly 10 acres. Does that include the wetland?
It does.
Okay. And you said it's about half of it, right?
It, it's technically 9.94 acres.
And that wetland connects to the retention water right behind it?
Correct. Uh, that wetland, it does extend onto, uh, the subdivision's, um, uh, common area. So, uh, so part of that wetland is crossing over the, uh, the two properties.
Okay. So anything we put in our business or any, I mean, it's going to have a huge buffer to the resident, or who, who's it backed to exactly? Townhomes, right, for?
And usually an aided wetland is a slightly higher quality, uh, wetland. Um, certainly wetlands can be mitigated, but in this day and age, it's extremely costly uh, to do so. You have to mitigate it within the watershed in which it's located, um, and, and/or you could pay into a conservancy, but the rates nowadays to pay into that conservancy are extremely high.
Okay. Okay, any, that's it. Start our public comment now?
Nancy Malone, Nancy Moore?
Hi, my name is Nancy Moore.
Ma'am, Chris. There you go. Thank you.
Better. Um, I live, I, I live right here, which is, backs up to the development we're talk, the subject site we're talking about. And so this, um, annexation agreement deals directly with me and my neighbors, but also with all the residents and taxpayers of the village. The money on these items that are being, um, discussed in the annexation agreement, um, the money that is waived is money that can't be spent by the village for essential services and projects. So it's either these items are not going to be done, or the taxpayers are going to have to make up for the money that's lost here. So the money that we could be making, we could be using in the village. Um, this great agreement gives away a lot, in my opinion. Um, and this property is on our very limited Randall Road corridor, which we used to call Golden Corridor. I don't understand why we're giving away so much here. So the items on here I am concerned about, but mostly I'm concerned about, um, the sales tax, 50%. So, um, back when I was, um, a trustee on the board in September 17th, 2002, we discussed the Woodmans', um, development agreement, and I wanted to tell you about that. It was very controversial at the time because we've never done anything like that before, and what that agreement consisted of was the first $200,000 of sales tax, um, generated revenue would be kept by Woodmans'. And then after that $200,000, up to $800,000 would be split 50/50. There was also extra given by Woodmans'. They were going to, um, uh, pay for 50% of the improvements on Benny Road. They were going to advance us $200,000 for our portion of Benny Road. They were, um, given guarantees of giving employees, um, opportunities of employment, I'm sorry, residents' opportunity of employment, um, first, before other people. And there was a lot of discussion about why we should give this sales tax incentive. And, um, what they did was they used the sales of the Rockford Store and the Conosha Store to give a background on why they came up with these numbers and why it would be useful to us. And asked, how long would it take to break even? Mr. Woodman said six months. Okay? So we're looking at this agreement of 50% sales tax for 30 months, but there's no proposed development. I mean, we don't really know what is going to be put in there. How much sales tax is it actually going to be able to produce? And is it really worth it for us to take that, you know, reduction in, in money that we could be using in our village for them to keep that? I, um, sorry. I believe, um, all the lost revenue proposed in this agreement will be detrimental to the residents and taxpayers of this village. I'm not against the annexation. I, I'm I'm in favor of annexing this property, but I'm not in favor of giving so much money to the developer, and of course, the developer's going to want as much as they can get. In addition, I'd like to say that, um, there, I know we brought up, um, the wetland considerations. The wetland is really huge in that area. There's a lot of water, and, um, I know we're talking about mitigation being very costly, but I'm really asking, I know governmental agencies have gotten around that sometimes, and they've done the mitigation anyway. So all I'm asking is that you keep in mind that we really don't, me and my neighbors, I'm speaking for my neighbors probably unfairly, but I would think that they would agree that we would not want, um, a more of an impact of the wetland, and anything that's put on that subject site that the wa, the water doesn't move further towards our development that is already very, very wet. Okay? During a rainy season, um, the water will come up quite a distance, and the water rushes through that, that, uh, lake that's off to the north there. Okay? Um, I'd also consider that's two properties to the north are going to be approximately the same, um, size as the subject site, you know, give or take. You know what I'm saying? Maybe a little, you know, in direction. So is this really such a need? Is there such a need to give them so much? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think we're still in the public comment section, so I believe there was one more public comment under the, the hearing.
Yep.
Good evening, President Skilman and board. My name is Jim Malone. I'm a Carpentersville taxpayer, and I'm a vice president of the Kimble Farms Master Association. The property is directly behind our neighborhood. Kimble Farms is the largest subdivision in the village, and three trustees live there. Myself, Trustee Menaskalko, and Trustee Frost. I'm here to state my opposition to promising taxpayer money to a future developer. This is like giving a blank check to an unknown developer for an unknown project. This is my backyard in the backyard of my neighbors. If this parcel is annexed into the TIF district, then that would qualify them for the money. We don't need to promise them specific money when we don't have a developer and we don't have a project. I welcome the annexation and begrudgingly accept the TIF. But I cannot accept a blank check policy, and I would hope the people in my neighborhood would stand with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Any more public comment?
Mr. Kias, your public comment was for the general session?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So that would.
Okay, motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
I'll second.
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Closing it. Okay, we're moving right back into our meeting. We have no proclamations tonight, no appointments or awards. We have public comment. Mr. Kias.
Well, good evening, Mr. President and trustees. Thank you for having me and thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Chris Kias, uh, uh, District 23 County Board Member, and just got a few updates from the county, uh, uh, three or four or five, kind of build up a little between meetings here. Uh, the O, our OEM office in Kane County is looking for, uh, partners in Kane County to, uh, partner with us in a disaster-ready a Kane program. It's a new program. It includes, what we're looking for is nonprofits, houses of worship, excuse me, uh, local governments and businesses to help provide emergency shelter, damage assessment, emotional and spiritual support, debris removal, volunteer coordination, and donate, donations management, as well as financial assistance and recovery, uh, communications. Uh, if you are interested in working with us, and hopefully we, uh, we already have communications with, uh, Carpentersville, uh, Scott Mizecki is our, uh, director of OEM, and you can contact him on email or by phone. On another subject, uh, the county is, uh, is, uh, instituting this fall, a, it's called Switch Together. Uh, it's, it's expanding our, uh, solar energy access in, uh, Kane County in the fall of 2025. The program is now open. Uh, it's a group buying initiative for residents and small businesses. So if you have in, uh, individuals or businesses who are, uh, interested in, uh, putting their solar in, uh, the, it, this would cover, this would cover solar panel installation and operational, optional battery, storage, and EV chargers. The average save, savings has been about $5,139 per household in this program. Uh, the federal solar tax dollar, tax credit of about 30% is available through December 31st. As we know, we've heard the national news. It probably will not be extended beyond that, so if you're interested in getting solar, uh, now's the time to pull the trigger on it. Uh, it's free to register. Uh, there's no obligation to purchase after registering, but you must sign up, uh, residents or businesses, sign up between, before September 3rd, 2025. Uh, and I can give you the, uh, you can, uh, find it on our website as well.
Somebody will help him.
Another item, uh, Kane County Recycles. With our recycling program, we will have our next, uh, recycling event, which is called Fall Shred and More, which is going to be September 27th, 2025. It again, it will be located at the, uh, Circuit Clerk's Office at 540 South Randall Road in St. Charles, and we'll be accepting, uh, se- secure document shredding, which we can't do at the, at the big thing. So if you need to have it, uh, done and you're headed that way, it's a good place to get it. As well as some, uh, other, uh, items, and you can go on our website to find out what more can be recycled. Uh, updates on the Kane County Animal Control. We have a low-cost rabies and microchip clinics. There's three of them. Sep, August 23rd, so I don't know if I'll get a chance to come back in here reminding you about that. Uh, September 17th and 18th, they're all located at our facility there at 460 Kessinger Road down in Geneva. That's for Kane County residents. Uh, there's, uh, the services include one-year rabies vaccine for $30 to $55, microchip, uh, $15 for seniors, 65 and over discounts with proof of age. And last but not least, uh, the, uh, Kane, and this was just a new, hot off the presses, uh, we're looking, of course, we were looking toward the elections nowadays for next year, and John Cunningham, ours, our, uh, Kane County Clerk, i- is, uh, promoting, uh, August 12th as, uh, National Poll Worker Recruitment Day because we're always short of, uh, uh, poll, uh, judges, election judges. So if you're interested in that, or there's citizens that are listening that would be interested in participating in a day and to be paid for it, it's kind of a long day, but it's, uh, definitely rewarding. I've done, I've done in the past, and it's nice to, to help, uh, us make sure that we have a nice, fair, and, uh, efficient election. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
Chris, we can, that's Switch Together, maybe we can get that out to the community?
If you want to just even email me, I'll be happy to.
Switch community, Switch Together.
Yeah.
And the election thing's fine, too. We can put that out for election judges. I mean, they get paid to do that, right?
Yeah, they do.
So it's better money nowadays, right? Yeah. We could, we could send it out.
August 12th?
August 12th is the, uh.
Okay, he'll email to us. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, thank you. We're moving on. Consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on those items unless the trustees so request. In that event, the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered as a normal sequence on the agenda. Looking for a motion?
Motion to.
Excuse me, President Skilman?
Yes, sir.
I would like to pull Item E.
E is in Edward?
Yes, please.
Okay, we'll move that to new business.
Okay. A motion, motion to approve the consent agenda, Items A through K minus E.
I'll second.
Motion, you got that, Karen? A through K minus E by Trustee Garcia, second by Trustee Abbott. Roll call, please.
Trustee Abbott?
Yes.
Trustee Frost?
President.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Gupta?
Yes.
Trustee Malone?
Yes.
Trustee Menaskalko?
Yes.
President Skilman?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. We have no old business tonight. Uh, we do have new business, and you want to go right into E?
Uh, you're discretion, President Skilman. We could go right into E off the consent agenda.
Okay, Item E, letter E. Approve an ordinance approving amended to Carpenter's comprehensive plan to exchange the underlying land use designation of a certain properties within the Spring Hill, about 31 subarea, Randall Road subarea, and Western Expansion subarea. So we're looking for a discussion. Trustee Malone?
I motion that we postpone this until the blank check policy is removed.
The what? I'm sorry.
Blank check policy, promising the money. I'm not sure how they got promised money. It didn't go through the board. I, I believe that the board is the only authority that can dish out taxpayer money. Am I incorrect on that?
Jen?
I mean, it the board would be voting on it to, to vote on the annexation.
Who had the authority to negotiate this without even bringing it to the board? That's what I'd like to know.
Nobody can approve the annexation agreement but the board.
I just would like to know whose authority negotiated it without even telling the board that we're going to be giving away taxpayer money to an unknown entity.
Correct me if I'm wrong, are we voting just for the annexation right now?
Well, right now you have to vote on the motion to postpone.
That's why I motion to get it removed. Looking for a second.
Second that.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in second on pulling it or postponing, I'm sorry. You have the terminology?
Postponed, yes.
I thought, right now we're voting just on the annexation, not the TIF, correct?
Correct. That's my.
Incorrect.
No.
So for the annexation agreement.
Can we put some clarity around this? Are we voting just for the annexation?
So.
Not the money?
At the tip.
So at this point, the annexation itself, there was a petition for annexation by both the RTW properties and the LNH Farm properties, uh, that the board had approved at the last board meeting. So by nature of, of that, they have, that annexation has been completed. This was ostensibly, uh, what was the terms by which they were voluntarily annexing into the village, understanding that they did so voluntarily annexing before the agreement itself was, uh, presented or finalized. So that's, and, and then this would precede what would be the TIF district itself, uh, which would be up, uh, next month for, um, final board action.
President Skilman, I'm a little confused.
Oh, my.
Maybe the, the word here is not that clear. It says approval of an ordinance approving the annexation agreement. The annexation is done, but now we need to do an agreement for the annexation? That's what it is?
Okay.
Excuse me, may I ask another question? That annexation includes that money we promised them, the 50% that Ms. Moore was talking about, 50% tax for 30 months? That includes that money. So if you vote yes, you're giving away a blank check, just so you're all clear, right behind in my backyard.
I thought we're voting on that on August 19th. Am I wrong?
Yes.
I.
Okay, so.
Believe you're.
So there's.
This whole agreement. The annexation. The agreement. Which includes all the incentives and everything discussed.
So this is correct. The agreement that is basically the afterfact terms by which they are seeking, uh, to honor their annexation into the, into the village.
Which includes the tip.
I, I still don't understand. What, what are we approving today? So the terms have already been decided and the annexation has been done?
Typically, an annexation would, would be done concurrently with an annexation agreement, or the annexation agreement would be, uh, presented prior to the annexation itself. Uh, in this case, there was a, a different set of just time parameters, specifically the fact that, uh, the TIF feasibility study was actually the predicate for us moving ahead with what was already within our jurisdiction, uh, with the TIF district. Uh, when the other two properties, being the LNH and the RTW, were aware that they were going to be excluded from the TIF district, uh, both actually, uh, voluntarily and within a week's time petitioned to annex so that they did not miss the opportunity to be part of the village's TIF district. For more historical context, and I, I can't speak to all the, the details, some of the discussions about the terms negotiated to Trustee Malone's question or point uh, go back to the beginning of this year, if not last year. Uh, so I, I, I don't know if even Director DeBrowski can speak to that, but, uh, but that, that was something that had been in discussion for several months, uh, prior to tonight.
Thank you. Uh, you are correct. Um, twofold. Uh, one, uh, some of these terms were brought up by the applicant. Um, so they were incorporated within the draft annexation agreement that we had prepared, and those were conditions. and those were conditions or preconditions that they wanted us to consider, which are now before you today. Secondly, when we were talking with them initially, the former administration was part of our discussions and didn't necessarily encourage, but they accepted the fact that, you know, RTW had some additional terms above and beyond what we would normally propose, and we just allowed it within the annexation agreement.
President Skilman?
Yes.
So the applicant made those requests?
Correct.
Thank you.
So.
And we're good with that.
You're thinking, trustee Malone, you're thinking this is in your backyard.
Right.
Almost. The property needs to be annexed by us.
Right.
Or Elgonquin's going to annex it, possibly.
Possibly.
Okay, and then they could have put a warehouse there, like they did across the street.
Right.
Which we don't like, right? But I'm telling you, there's a good possibility. So, sorry, you can't speak from the crowd, you know that. So, okay, but that's a possibility, okay?
I don't know. It seems like.
Okay.
We're, we're marks. Oh, Carpenter'sville, they'll give you money. Drive it over.
Excuse me, okay. Let's think about this, okay?
I thought about it a lot.
I know, but you're, you're, you've got to, just relax.
Why do we have to get them money?
No, I'm not saying we do, but we could rework it a little bit, but.
That's all.
I'm telling you, we cannot not, if we want to bring business here, we need to work with them.
I understand.
You understand a TIF district that we all voted for on the TIF district here, sitting up here. So let's, you know, if we can rework it and bring it back next meeting, I don't know if that's doable, because we're running out of time here. We're working with other, you know, we're working with different fire departments in the area, we're working with, there's a lot of backwork going on for this whole area. Did, I'm sorry. Oh, did you have a comment? No. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. But yeah, no, I mean, if there's something, is there something that could be done to negotiate for something for next meeting?
I mean, we can, we can certainly go back to and understand, I mean, this is, this is hand in hand with the LNH Farm annexation agreement, which terms have not even been at this point negotiated. Those would be presented to the board presumably at the August 19th meeting. But I mean, if there's a direction, for example, by the board that we are not giving any incentive whatsoever outside of the TIF, I would just ask for that direction, because that's what we would need to communicate with.
Well, no, we can't go.
With those developers.
Can't go that far. We're going to lose them, obviously, and they can just go to Elgonquin.
Well, right, but I mean, that is the village board's purview, isn't it? I mean, the village board could just say no.
Right.
Anything.
But we're not ready to, I don't think we're there, and just like trustee Malone said, let's, you know, let's look at it a little closer. And.
I asked.
And we can call for a special meeting if we need to, if there's a time constraint.
Sure.
Excuse me?
You can.
Thank you. Okay. But, you know, I think that's acceptable, you know, and I think, you know, people live in that area. I, you know, I don't want to build anything against anybody's property, trust me. I don't want to, you know, the people Winchester Glen are looking at back of warehouses, you guys. My kid lives there. It's a beautiful subdivision, a bigger subdivision, money-wise, the houses are worth more at Winchester Glen, okay? And they're looking at back of warehouses. And we did nothing about it. Nobody did.
Why?
Because we didn't. Nobody stepped up, you know, and did anything with Elgonquin. They just put them in. So it's disturbing, looking at them every day when I see them.
I can see them from my kitchen window.
Yeah, you can see them, and we can all see them on.
I can see them.
Trust me, everybody at Winchester Glen could see them in their backyard. And they're really close there, because all the trucks are coming through into our subdivisions now.
Yep.
Out there. And they're sleeping in their trucks out there. There's a lot going on out there in Elgonquin, okay? So, but I'm not saying, I don't want warehouses behind your house, because there's a possibility Elgonquin's going to keep, they're going to build three more. And they don't care.
Oh, I know.
And they'll come and take our property right down to Platte Hill.
My.
It's that, it's this close. If we don't annex it and get it, you know, move forward.
May I offer my opinion on that?
Yes.
I'm not saying, don't give them anything, but when it's, there's, when there's no developer, they're going to stick us with this. In three years, they want to build something, they're going to say, oh, well, look what you guys already agreed to. If it's in the TIF, they're already eligible for it. That's what I don't understand. Why are we giving up specifics?
We've had some business.
They don't have.
Business is looking at that property at Grandview and.
I know that.
So, I mean, so that would be nowhere near anybody's property. I mean, there's a huge wetlands back there.
I just don't think we should give away money without knowing what it's going to be built. That's why I want, that's my ask.
Right. I get, I get that. I mean, I understand. And.
Can I suggest a couple of things? And I want to make sure I'm delivering at the staff level what the village board's looking for as a next step. First of all, certainly, if we're postponing this to August 19th, to me, that's a non-issue, because we have to come back with the LNH Farms matter anyway. So that's fine, and, and I just want to make sure we're delivering in the next two weeks what the board's looking for. And I guess that's the clarity I'm looking for. If, if we're, if, is there a component of the RTW that's particularly troubling or problematic? Is it the sales tax rebate, for example? Is it something to do with, with another component of it? Just, just, I just want to have direction as to if we're going to go back and negotiate different terms or explain what we would accept, that that is going to be acceptable when we bring it back. That's.
President Skilman?
Yes, sir.
Oh, 50, I'm against the 50%. That's, that's just staggering, you know, when.
For what?
It just seems the 50% sales tax.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got, I got an issue with that.
50% is pretty normal, I think, out there in the world, but I think the months maybe is negotiable, I think, or, you know, but maybe, I mean.
Sales tax reduction will be about 1%, right? 50% of our, we are 2% village tax, correct? So you will looking at 1% for 30 months. That's what we're offering. Uh, that's not a lot.
For what? What are they building?
We don't know. We're bringing them in.
That's my point.
Could be no sales tax if it's housing.
Exactly.
If it's service.
They can build a shoe store or a, a.
Gas station.
They build a gas station. I'll get crucified.
We don't want that.
We don't. We're here to.
Randall Road's now a new corridor for transportation, because everybody should understand it and know that now. If you haven't seen the warehouses going up, all the way down to 90. But go ahead, I'm sorry.
I apologize. I didn't mean to speak while you were speaking, President Skilman.
We can look at that. 50%, whatever, 35.
Would a reduced term, I guess, be generally acceptable to the board if it wasn't 30 months, but 12 months, for example, or?
I guess, whatever, yeah.
I think we, we need more clarity around this. What were the assumptions behind these numbers? I know we are, we are proposing, we're trying to attract new business. I'm totally in for that. I think what trustee Jim's concern is that why there's a specific number around the TIF, 30% or 50%? So we'll just need to understand what are the assumptions behind those numbers? It could be any business coming in? Is it a blanket TIF that we're giving out?
Incentives.
Incentive. So.
Okay.
I think that's what we need some clarity around.
I have a question. Now, the packet that we received is saying that we're requesting approval of the annexation agreement so that it will be included within the TIF, not that what the TIF is, that they're going to be included in it. So we haven't decided on the TIF yet, and that's what we're voting on the 19th, correct?
So the, the, correct, because the TIF technically doesn't exist yet.
Right.
So part of the annexation agreement is formalizing the fact that the TIF would be, would be approved, and they would be included in it if it were approved.
Right, if it were.
That's part of it. The formal action to approve the TIF wouldn't, wouldn't be presented to the board until the first meeting in September, assuming everything else goes as, as currently planned. So the annexation agreement at this point, that's really the logical reason that it would be approved before the TIF district itself, is it's the guarantee to the annexing property that they're included in it, but obviously other, other terms are at issue here. So, okay, so it, am I accurate to say that I'll work with Director DeBrowski on reaching out and particularly with this property owner to, to scale back, what is the sales tax incentive component on this, to trustee Gupta's point, to provide some representative numbers of what the various incentives signify or represent from our perspective, from the developer or the property owner's perspective? Is that, is that fair?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Just a, just a, just a point of, point of order. The motion technically was a motion to postpone, and when it was made, it didn't have a deadline to postpone to a certain date. So it was more akin to an indefinite postponement. That kind of motion can't be amended, which is no big deal to postpone it. The only difference is, it's kind of a procedural difference, is that technically, all you're going to need is a motion to remove it from the table when it comes time for next week.
Okay.
So it's just a slight procedural difference, but it's, it's not technically a motion to postpone it till the 18th. It, it was made indefinitely postponed. So you can either vote on the motion as it was made, and you can approve it, and then we can vote to bring it off the table on the 18th, or what you can do is you can deny the motion, and it can be remade.
Remade right now.
Correct. Correct.
Terry Gibson, could trustee Malone just withdraw the motion and resubmit it as a motion to postpone until August 19th?
That can be, well, no, because it's got a second.
And the second could do the same.
Well, that, then it can.
No.
If both, if both people do that, that's fine.
No.
Another technicality, I guess.
Trustee Malone? Okay. Just, is that a no?
I'm not going to change my motion.
Okay, well. We can, okay, we can table it then next meeting.
What you, all, what you need to do next meeting is that it would need a vote to remove it from the table.
Yeah. Okay, we can handle that. Okay. Do you have that, what we need to do?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we're going to vote on postponing this. And we have a motion and a second. And row call, please.
Trustee Abbott?
Yes.
Trustee Frost?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
No.
Trustee Gupta?
Yes.
Trustee Malone?
Yes.
Trustee Maskalco?
Yes.
President Skilman?
Yes. Okay, thank you. All right, moving on. New business, approval of resolution accepting professional servicing agreement for Phase 2 Engineering Design for the Silverstone Subdivision Sanitary Sewer Force Main, abandonment project with Engineering Enterprises Incorporated of Sugar Grove, Illinois, in the amount of $118,570. Director Gray?
Thank you, President Skilman. On the spring and summer of 2024, the village experienced two sanitary sewer force main breaks on the Silverstone Force Main along Kings Road. In that same year, we actually entered into a contract with Engineering Enterprises, Inc. to conduct an analysis on the force main, the interceptor sewer conveyance, and an inflow and infiltration, also known as an INI study, of the adjacent sanitary sewer basin areas. The results of that study detailed that if the village lined some sanitary sewers in the two adjacent basin areas and completed improvements to the Silverstone lift station, the village would be able to abandon approximately 1.2 miles of the existing 10-inch ductile iron force main that is failing. This proposal will initiate the start of the design for the abandonment of a large portion of the force main. Additionally, in order to reduce these excess flows, curating place pipelining in the amount of $1.1 million will be required as part of the project. That's going to be designed in-house with our staff and for fiscal year 26. And typically, we usually budget, we do this as an annual program, we usually budget about $300,000. So next year, we'll have the budget 1.1. That's to reduce the excess flows during wet weather flows.
Any questions on A?
President Skilman?
Yes.
Director Gray? Phase, this is Phase 2, right?
So we've already. Phase 2 engineering, this is the, this is the design, yes.
Is there another phase after 2?
Yes, Phase 3 will be the construction.
That'd be it, right?
Yeah. So there's two things on Phase 3. There's, Phase 3 is the construction, entering into contract with the contractor, and then Phase 3 Engineering, which is an engineering firm to oversee the contractor.
In-house. In-house on the.
That will be contracted out. Yeah, it's probably, I don't remember the exact, we won't know until it gets designed.
Got you.
I want to say it was about $2.1 million project for the abandonment of everything and doing improvements to the lift station.
That's what we talked about. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Okay, looking for a motion?
Motion to approve item A.
I'll second.
Motion by trustee Garcia, second by trustee Maskalco. Row call, please.
Trustee Frost?
Present.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Gupta?
Yes.
Trustee Malone?
Yes.
Trustee Maskalco?
Yes.
Trustee Abbott?
Yes.
President Skilman?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Letter B, approval of residents accepting Phase 2 Design Engineering Services Agreement for the Old Town Area 1B, Lord Avenue, project with HR Green Incorporated of McHenry, Illinois, in the amount of $179,776.
Yeah, so this contract is for the Phase 2 Engineering Design Services for the reconstruction of Lord Avenue from Maple Avenue to Williams Street, similar to the Old Town Phase 1A project, which is adjacent to it. This project will consist of roadway reconstruction, including replacement of sidewalks, curb and gutter, which currently there, there are no curb and gutter on Lord Avenue, the sanitary sewer system, storm sewers, which currently there are no storm sewers on Lord Avenue, and the water main and new lighting, which there are about three lights, actually comed lights on the Lord Avenue. The design was previously initiated by HR Green, but was pulled due to funding. It was actually part of a Old Town Phase 1A originally. They started it, got about 70% completed. This is the, finished the remaining 30% of the design. Basically, we're trying to get this to engineering plans, contract documents, so we can bid this out early next year for reconstruction.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
President Skilman?
Yes.
Is this gonna, is this gonna affect that parking that we just did along there, or is it north, or is it north of there?
North of there. Yep.
Thank you.
From Maple to Williams.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve item B on the new business.
I'll second.
Motion by trustee Garcia, second by trustee Abbott for letter B under new business. Row call, please.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Gupta?
Yes.
Trustee Malone?
Yes.
Trustee Meniskalco?
Yes.
Trustee Abbott?
Yes.
Trustee Frost?
Present.
President Skilman?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Letter C, approval of resolution approving final change order number one for the Kings Road and Alameda Improvement Project for additional work and balance, seeing the final contract quantities in the amount of $230,474.13. Director Gray?
So essentially, this is the final change order for the contract with Markham Construction that has additions to the contract as well as reductions to the contract. These increased costs were anticipated during the fiscal year 25 budget, and therefore, we budgeted an additional $255,000 that year. So the final contract was increased by $230,000. However, it's about $455,000 under our budget.
Under budget, right.
Amount.
Very good. Any questions? Row call, or I mean, motion, please?
Motion to approve item C on the new business.
I'll second.
We got a second over there?
Sam.
Sam?
Yeah.
Trustee Gupta. Okay, we have a motion by trustee Garcia, second by trustee Gupta. Row call, please.
Trustee Gupta?
Yes.
Trustee Malone?
Yes.
Trustee Maskalco?
Yes.
Trustee Abbott?
Yes.
Trustee Frost?
Present.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
President Skilman?
Yes. Thank you. Motion approved. Manager Stewart?
All right. Good evening again, President Skilman, Board of Trustees. Just a couple of updates on the evening, and I know we all are maybe hoping to.
Uh, just a couple of updates on the evening, and I know we all are, uh, maybe hoping to get back to Carpenter Park here. So just want to give an update, truck enforcement, our police department, uh, recently conducted enforcement detail for truck violations specifically targeting overweight vehicles and trucks not bearing proper registrations for their weight load. Uh, from mid-June through most of July, uh, the police department issued 28 citations for overweight vehicles for a total of 430,000 pounds that were overweight on our roads, uh, which was 28 citations and $20,000 in fines for those citations issued. Uh, additional petty violation, um, vehicle code violations were issued, about 44 of them, as part of the enforcement detail. Thank you to the police department and President Skilman for identifying what appeared to be an increasing issue with overweight trucks on our roads. That gets very expensive for Director Gray's, uh, budget every year. Uh, our police and fire department personnel had another save last week, uh, involving a man at Woodman's. Uh, we will have some life-saving recognitions at the August 19th board meeting, including for our community service officer who saved the 14-month-old toddler a few weeks ago. Uh, financial update, I feel like this is so much good news for everyone. Uh, thanks to Ben and the finance department, Laurel's here, thank you for being here, Laurel. Uh, thank you for your efforts as well. The village received its 11th consecutive Government Finance Officer Association Budget Award. Um, so there'll be a little more on that coming, but, uh, that was good news. Uh, speaking of budget, department heads received the initial communication about the 2026 budget process. The plan is that draft budgets will be reviewed and discussed at the staff level by late September prior to presentment to the Audit and Finance Committee in October, and to which all board members are invited and encouraged to attend. We do believe two separate meeting nights is probably more appropriate than trying to jam everything into one evening. Uh, but we will reach out for scheduling purposes to make sure, uh, we maximize people's attendance. Uh, development projects, uh, two things to note. Uh, the East Side bid, uh, for the construction at Riverfront Park, uh, the bid opening is scheduled for August 11th. Uh, everything otherwise remains on track for the construction to begin this fall. Uh, maybe the best news of the day, uh, we did actually receive from Horizon, uh, a draft redevelopment agreement for the Iron Flats project. Uh, and while we are still reviewing it, it came in, in literally the last two hours. Uh, it looks like a framework that was maybe a little less than we were anticipating in terms of their ask of the village. Uh, so with that, we will follow up more once staff has reviewed that in some detail. Uh, National Night Out going on right now, Friday, August 8th is, uh, the Wild Robot at Carpenter Park, beginning at dusk. Uh, at the next board meeting, we will have a proclamation recognizing Milan Syndrome Awareness Day. A young resident with, uh, the syndrome will be present with his family as part of the recognition. And Village Hall will have yellow bulbs in our exterior lights at Village Hall that day as part of the theme of the awareness. Uh, we are meeting with the village of Sleepy Hollow to discuss us providing building inspection services for their village through some sort of a intergovernmental agreement. We're also awaiting feedback on our, uh, submitted prospectus for what would be a regional social worker primarily employed by Carpenter'sville, but serving, uh, the surrounding communities, uh, which, uh, would be funded at least initially through the Dundee Township Mental Health Board. That is all I have for this evening, President Skilman, Board of Trustees, thank you.
Thank you, any questions? No staff reports tonight?
No.
We have trustee committee reports, trustee Manscalko.
Nope.
You have nothing?
Nothing.
Trustee Frost?
Not this.
I have nothing.
Trustee Gupta? Trustee Abbott?
Uh, other than National Night Out is, is a great thing, I have nothing.
Thank you. Trustee Malone?
All I have is, I would like to say, any residents out there that would like to speak with me, jmalone@seaville.org, or go to our village website, just click on the government tab. Send me an email, I'll give you my phone number, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Garcia, of course.
Um, just want to report, AAC, the Antique Automobile Club of America, had a great event on the 20th, there were some very nice cars. Uh, weather didn't cooperate too much, but there were 67 brave souls, uh, included a 1914 Elgin 8. There is probably three of those cars in the country. There were some very nice vehicles. Um, they're looking to come back next year. And, um, hopefully I can count with all your support and bring them back. And that's it for me. Waiting for the next, uh, Oriente Finance meeting.
It's coming up.